We've got to get rolling here, so we are going to open up this meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the Crystal Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl is absent. Uh, Councilmember Deschler.
Here.
And Councilmember Cole.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Now, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on that agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. Looking for a second? Nancy?
I second.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, we have a consent agenda in front of us, and the snicker was because it's a long one. From the get-go, we are going to pull one of the items. That item number, do you know what that is?
313.
313. That will be pulled and put on the regular agenda, and I will read the rest into the record at this time. Uh, approval of minutes for the following meetings: the regular council meeting on June 19th, 2018, and the work session that followed that, and then the council meeting from July 10th, and the work session from July 12th. Approval of a list of license applications submitted by the city clerk. That is on file in the city clerk's office. Approval of a resolution which is accepting the following donations: $390.77 from Crime Prevention Board for City Police Department; $1,322.50 from Crystal Fund for Community Progress for Arbor Day 2018; $2,000 from Crystal Lions for Crystal Airport Open House; $119.12 from donation boxes for Crystal Police K-9 Unit; $250 from West Metro VFW for Crystal Airport Open House; $1,000 from Minneapolis Elks Lodge 44 for Crystal Frolics; $1,000 from the Target Corporation for Crystal Police Crime Prevention; Community policing for Minnesota Knight to Unite; and another $1,000 for Shop With A Cop. $10,000 from VFW Post 494 for Crystal Frolics; $15,000 from West Metro Fire Rescue District Firefighters Relief Association for Crystal Frolics; Approval of solicitor license for Tasha for Window Concepts of Minnesota to go door-to-door for the rest of this year; Approval for soliciting license for McKenzie, Benjamin Dillon, Ricky, Aaron from Custom Remodelers Inc. to go door-to-door through the rest of the year; Approval of solicitor license for Robert of Comcast to go door-to-door in Crystal through the rest of the year for telecom services; And then approval of a license for Trayvon Washington for American Dream Improvements to go door-to-door through the rest of the year; Approval of temporary on-sale license at Welcome Park from July 27th to 29th. Uh, that's part of the Crystal Frolics celebration. West Metro Fire Relief Association submitted that. Approval of a resolution authorizing a grant application for Becker Park Stormwater Infiltration Project to the Minnesota Pollution - from the - to the Minnesota Pollution Control. Uh, that's right. Approval of a resolution for the donation of Becker Athletic Field Lighting and Bleachers to the Aitkin Public School District. Approval of a resolution prohibiting parking on the east side of Hampshire from Medicine Lake Road extending 30 feet to the north. Approval of a resolution prohibiting parking on the south side of 41st from Douglas Drive to Adair Avenue. 13th is what we are taking and putting on the regular agenda. 14, approval of a resolution removing the stop sign at Sumter Avenue North and 58 Avenue North. And approval of a resolution adopting the snow plowing and ice control policy. And the final one is approval of a resolution adopting the sidewalk license and maintenance agreement. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Olga, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do we have anyone here for open forum?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there anybody here wishing to speak for open forum? You got one? All of you? Okay. Um, what I'd like you to do is to come forward and go to the podium, adjust the microphone, give us your name, your address, and go ahead and speak. Um, we'll give you about, I think the normal time is three minutes. Is that right? That's right. I'm not reading it, so I'm just trying to do it off the top of my head. So, three minutes, and then when you're done, please fill out one of the yellow sheets and give it to Chrissy, and she'll put you into the record. So, I can't call your names, so, oh, you've got one filled out? Why don't you please bring that over to Chrissy? All right, thank you. Pat Archer. Okay, welcome, Pat.
Hello, thank you. Uh, my name is Pat Archer. I have grown up here almost 50 years, and, uh, the corner of 41st, uh, has gotten to be a real busy corner. We have the church there, a number of things are - there's cars coming and going all the time. People come out of Adair, and they are going, uh, a lot of times over the speed limit. And we've now got kids in just about every house in the dead end, and, uh, up and down the street as well. And, uh, I'm here to talk about a stop sign, and I had talked to Mark Ray about it, and he proposed putting in a yield sign for Brunswick, and that would have no effect on the cars going up and down 41st. So, I'm here to talk about a stop sign, so we can slow the traffic down.
Okay. Anything else on that?
You know, if, if not a stop sign, a speed bump, just about, you know, anything. About 30 years ago, there was a, a young kid that was ran over and killed on 41st and Zane, and I just never want to see it happen again.
Okay. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Was there anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, uh, my name's Erin Stone. I live in the same vicinity, 4118 Brunswick Avenue North, and same concerns as the rest of the neighbors about that intersection. With the, the church and the increased fellowship that they have, the parking situation has gotten out of control. Um, you know, the intersection's become really unsafe. There's no stop signs at all there. Um, so now you have church, the cars parking on Brunswick on both sides, because now you're limiting parking on, um, on 41st there. So now you're just forcing the parking issue from 41st, where there's no homes, into an area where there are homes and a lot of children, and it's just become very unsafe. For my son in particular to even ride his bike in, on our own streets, um, in the evenings where you do have, um, cars parked on both sides of the street, and he's trying to ride his bike while there is church going on. Um, we used to live on a very quiet street with no cars, um, and now you have this parking situation that's become very unsafe. You can't see when you're at the corner. Nobody slows down. Um, at times, I know there was just a study done, um, there was cars clocked going over 40 miles an hour through that intersection where you already have a stop sign at Adair, and you have a stop sign on Douglas, and they pick up speeds of 40 miles an hour where there's a hill, and you can't see anything. So it is very dangerous, and I've talked to Nancy about it. We've discussed it. Um, I don't think adding a yield sign on Brunswick's going to do anything. I think it actually might make the situation worse, because then you're just giving more right-of-way to the people on 41st that are already speeding and not paying attention. So when you do have those cars parked there, and you're approaching that intersection, you can't see children that are riding their bikes. On any given night, um, you see groups of, you know, six children or so that are riding up and down that hill, um, and it's, it's just really dangerous. And it's never been, had been an issue, because nobody went to that church before, quite honestly. So I don't know how you solve the situation. Um, I saw upon the agenda that, you know, you take away the parking on 41st, you're just pushing that problem further into the residential part of that neighborhood.
Okay.
Oh, Erin, if I could, Erin, could you share that story with us? Because I, that one, I thought was -
Yeah, so recently, my son got off the bus, actually, at that corner, and, um, the bus had come 15 minutes early that day. Um, and this, it's, sorry, this is why I'm upset, because it was very scary. Um, we weren't out there yet, because it was the first time he ever rode the bus, and who would have thought it came 15 minutes early? Um, he's only five. He's really little. And so he got off the bus, there's no stop signs, and there were cars coming from both directions. Um, the bus had its stop sign out, and he crossed the street, and he was on the corner, and the truck coming was going to turn with, even though the bus had its stop sign out, and there's no stop signs there, and the bus driver was yelling at him to stop. We were running down the street telling him to stop, and, um, we talked to the bus driver at the corner right then, and she said, "I hate stopping at this intersection, because it's, it's so unsafe. It's one of the unsafeest places that I have to stop and drop off, um, kids." And she's like, "I really hate when I get a sign at this intersection." She's like, "I always sit and wait to make sure that the child safely crosses the street and get, can get to its home." Um, because, she's like, "Cars don't stop. They just, they go, because there's no, there's no stop sign." She goes, "They really need to put a four-way stop at this intersection." And that's coming from a bus driver who sees children there all the time.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that piece.
And we do have 24 children within that intersection, within five houses either way. Um, of, of three ways of that intersection, 24 kids.
Yeah. Okay.
And they're all probably average age of two to eight.
I know, I know a lot of those kids. I know at least two of them.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm aware of that. Anything else that you need to express?
Oh, that's everything.
Okay. Do me a favor and fill out one of these yellow sheets. I think they're located at the entry, and then hand it over to Chrissy when you're done. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Erin.
Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right.
Hi. Good evening. Uh, Mike Dacken, I also live in the area, right down the end of, of the dead end there. Um, obviously, we've, we've heard compelling arguments for it, so I'm not going to say what they said, but I do think we need to consider, um, putting the accountability on the driver. With all the kids in the areas, especially kids who are at different ages, like my daughter is just, you know, now she's running all of a sudden, so, and she's not even riding her bike yet, where she's going to be going faster. They don't quite know the rules, you know, to look both ways, or to slow down when they're approaching that intersection. So if we're going to put it, the signs would at least put it on the driver to be more aware and to follow the law. Even if they're going the speed limit, that's enough to cause a lot of damage. So, it at least, again, puts the accountability on the drivers, which I think, in essence, is just going to hopefully create a safer intersection.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Yeah, did you cover everything? And you do have a yellow sheet. Awesome. Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? All right, any other topic? Seeing no one approach, we're going to close open forum. Uh, that takes us, I believe, into the regular agenda. Nope, not quite, not quite. We've got a public hearing before that. Um, so, we're having a public hearing at this point in time to receive comments and consider a resolution authorizing the sale of 3856 Maryland Avenue North to the EDA of New Hope. We have our New Hope mayor here in attendance. Welcome. Um, and we also have John Seder here to address the council on the issues of this, of this resolution. John, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Adams, council members, Mayor Hampton. Uh, so this is something we've been working on for a few months with our council and also with New Hope's staff. Um, it is part of a, a bigger discussion regarding surplus properties that the city of Crystal has identified that it could sell to raise funds for capital improvements to the city's park system. Um, this lot is unique in that while the city of Crystal is the owner of the lot, it is actually located in the city of New Hope. This dotted line here is the border, Crystal on the right, New Hope on the left, and the lot is located here. And here's a, a zoomed-in view. Um, this is the south end of Kentucky Park in Crystal, and this is New Hope's Lions Park. And again, the border is the dotted line running north-south there, and this is the parcel in question. A little bit of background, uh, like I said, the city of Crystal owns the lot, but it's located in the city of New Hope. This, Crystal acquired it in 1970. It was tax-forfeited land, but there was never any deed restriction placed on the property by the state, which suggests that the city of Crystal paid market value for the lot at the time it purchased it. In other words, it wasn't a, a free lot that the city got from the state, that the city had to pay for it. Uh, there's no real history of active park use, except for walking between the two parks. And the shortest route for that is right across the northern part of the lot, which I'll get to in a minute. Um, on March 20th this year, the city council, the Crystal City Council identified this as one of the surplus properties that could be sold to raise funds for park improvements. And on June 5th, the city of Crystal, the city council declared the property to be surplus and directed staff to proceed with the sale. Uh, since then, staff from the two cities have met on-site and discussed various technical issues, and have reached an agreement on the potential terms of sale to the New Hope EDA. And so tonight's public hearing on the seller's side of the equation is the first, and then New Hope's EDA, I believe, is scheduled to consider this at their next meeting on August 13. So what are the proposed terms of the sale? Uh, Crystal would declare the public trail easement across the north 20 feet of the lot, and drainage and utility easements all around the perimeter of the lot, and I'll show you these on the next slide. Then we would quitclaim the property to the New Hope EDA for a price of $65,000. At any time after that, the New Hope EDA could sell the lot to a builder of their choosing. Um, in the meantime, New Hope would be responsible for building a drainage inlet and pipe connecting the inlet to the storm sewer system on Maryland Avenue. And then, once that work is done, Crystal would come in and build the Batuminus path that would connect Kentucky Avenue and Crystal with Maryland Avenue in New Hope. The idea there is to formalize and make more usable sort of the informal pedestrian route that has existed over the years. Uh, the estimated net proceeds for Crystal are just under $53,000, and that would be credited to the park's capital funds for improvements to our park system. So this is a hand sketch of kind of what we've worked out with New Hope's staff. Um, the, the eight-foot Batuminus Trail, and this would have ADA-compliant ped ramps at each of the streets, um, again, connecting Maryland and Kentucky avenues. And then in the green, it'd be a drainage inlet back here to capture water running in its natural direction from the south to the north, and then the pipe would take it underground here, and then to an existing catch basin on Maryland Avenue. I also want to point out that the homeowner to the south has removed their fence encroachment, that they went ahead and did that. We really appreciate that, and so this chain-link fence encroaching on our property is no longer there. Before I move on, are any questions on the sketch or the, the terms of the sale?
Counsel? Seeing none. Okay.
Um, so, what are the reasons to proceed? Well, the drainage concerns that have been brought up by the neighbors will be addressed with the new inlet and the pipe connection to New Hope's storm sewer. Uh, we are preserving, enhancing the public access between the two parks and between the two cities' neighborhoods. New Hope will get site control over a lot in their city, so they can decide what kind of house gets built there. And Crystal will get almost as much in sale proceeds as we would if we sold the lot ourselves. And that difference is, the one reason potentially not to proceed is that we estimate that we will get about $1,300 less doing it this way than if we were just to sell the lot ourselves. So, with that, uh, we are asking that, after holding the public hearing tonight, we're asking that you consider the resolution, that, adopt the resolution that would authorize the sale to the New Hope EDA, and then again, on August 13th, they would consider the, uh, the same terms, and we would expect to close no later than September 4th. And then the drainage pipe and the trail construction is kind of still in flux, um, so that, there'll be more to come on that in terms of timing, but, uh, we know that we'd want to proceed with the closing on the property as soon as possible, so New Hope can begin marketing the lot for a builder to purchase it and build a home as soon as possible. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
All right, thank you, John. Other questions from the council? We've talked about this a lot. All right, thank you. Thanks, John. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing from anybody who is interested in giving testimony on this issue. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here wishing? All right, seeing nobody approach, I'm going to close the public hearing, and last chance for counsel for any questions or comments on this. Uh, looking for a motion on this? Anyone? John?
Make a motion approving the resolution authorizing the sale of 3856 Maryland Avenue North.
Thank you. Uh, looking for a second? Julie?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, last questions. Last chance. It seems funny to be, you know, in a public setting, and we don't ask many questions, but just, just from the point of view, uh, we've had extensive conversations about this surplus property, so, um, to us, it's, it's, it's very easy, but keep in mind, this is a process that we're going through with multiple properties, and it's designed to help fund some of the master plan funding for the, the master, or excuse me, the award-winning master plan, Parks Master Plan. So, um, that's what this is, uh, at the end of the day, all about. All right, I'm going to take a vote at this time. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next, we will receive comments. No, uh, public hearing on the right-of-way of Georgia and Hampshire. We've seen a couple of these. John, you want to fill us in?
All right, thank you again, Mayor Adams, council members. Uh, this is the second time you've seen something like this. This is sort of the second batch of vacation of unnecessary cul-de-sac right-of-way on Georgia and Hampshire avenues. The previous batch were, were these two here on Georgia and these two here on Hampshire. These curves are no longer there. They have been vacated. Uh, the second batch came about because the council asked us to proceed with kind of cleaning all of these up, not just the ones that were necessary to solve a, an actual or potential setback problem. And so, uh, this second set will, uh, correct the other side of each cul-de-sac, so that these will be straight lines on both sides of both streets. So the history here is, um, I'll go back to the aerial. This east-west line used to be kind of the north end of development. For a very brief period of time, this was being developed, and north of it was farmland. Um, but shortly after, like within a year after these streets were platted, they were extended north. And so the cul-de-sacs that were platted in here were never needed and are never again going to be needed, because the streets go through. So this is sort of cleaning up and kind of an error from many, many years ago, decades, 60 years ago. Um, and, uh, it makes sense, because there's no reason for us to retain that right-of-way, and it will provide more flexibility for those homeowners to add on to the fronts of their homes. So, uh, the, the yellow is the area to be vacated that will then revert back to the respective lots. And we are not proposing any physical changes to the roadway, and there's no objection from the utility companies. They have no use for that right-of-way anywhere. So we do recommend approval, uh, after you take public testimony, if there is any. Um, we recommend approval of the resolution vacating these easements. That's, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for John from the council? None? All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for testimony. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this issue? Anybody wishing? Nobody approaching? We will close the public hearing. Uh, looking for, uh, council action or resolution? Nancy?
I'll, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolution: to vacate portions of city streets within the Colonial Acres subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Second? John?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? I actually do have a question. Um, the, what we, the money we had put in escrow, has that been returned? Is that contingent upon this vote, or has that already been done?
Oh, uh, we received direction to go ahead and refund that, so that has been done.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All members in - pardon?
Do you want to hear a random fun fact?
Sure.
My house sits on the, where the driveway for the farmhouse, where the dividing line used to be. My house is where that driveway used to be.
For the farmhouse?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The farmhouse. There you go.
All right.
Fun fact.
Fun fact. All right, we have a motion on the table. Uh, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So the first item on our regular agenda will be the consent agenda, item 13, that we, uh, pulled from that consent agenda, and that is backed by the consent agenda. There it is. Approval of a resolution authorizing the installation of a yield sign on Brunswick Avenue North at 41st Avenue North. So, go ahead.
I would recommend that in light of the comments you got at open forum, additional research is needed, and we should table this or continue this to a future council for further discussion, after more evaluation is done.
And there's some planned already, isn't there?
Correct. I believe the public works director has reached out to one of the residents.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot of sense to me, then. All right, let's -
Get more data.
Let's go ahead and redress that. In a work session, is that where we, you would like that?
I would assume we'd want to have a conversation with you before we proceed with anything formal.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure, John.
Have we ever used, like, temporary stop signs for, you know, a period of time, you know, in a situation like this, just to kind of get a sense if it makes a difference? Have we ever tried that?
I don't believe, I think we only use temporary stop signs when signals are out. I don't think we've done it for situations like this. That's a good question, though. I'll ask.
I'm thinking that would be confusing if you go back and forth, you want them to try to make it clear. Go ahead, Julie.
Because we've got extra stop signs now that we have. We're taking in a lot of Sumter.
You know where you can find some?
Just for, for anybody, anybody's information on that particular intersection, it's really not an intersection, it's a curve now.
No, it is. Yeah, you're right. It is a curve. I won't get quite a bit. The only thing that bothered me was, you know, so many ducks that go back and forth from this house to the pond, and now I'm nervous they're going to get it.
Okay.
Put a duck down there.
Just, John, go ahead.
One last thing. Um, I, I live on a busy street, and for, for a while, when I had little kids, I also liked, uh, put signs out and, you know, telling people to be aware that there's children at play. Um, I don't know, have you, have you gotten any of those signs by any chance to make any, you know, kind of like, see if that makes a dent at all? Because I know when I go through neighborhoods and there's signs saying, like, you know, "Watch for kids," or stuff like that, I mean, I try to be really attentive to what, what's going on in the neighborhood, so. Until we get this resolved, I don't know if that's something to think about, to work with.
We got Steve, the little yellow.
Yes, yes, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, the fluorescent.
Yeah. Not on 41st.
Yeah.
Not Brunswick.
Not Brunswick, yeah.
Okay.
You haven't been with 41st?
Hold, hold on.
You want to have him come up here and speak, or are we getting out of the -
Yeah, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not having a conversation at this point that -
We got so much time.
You're welcome to recommend that to them, and, and that's great. Um, I think there's going to be some other recommendations. I have a couple, too. Having some conversations with the bus company, as well, is something that occurred to me. So I think there's plenty to talk about, and I'm sure you will be informed in terms of what comes out of the -
Absolutely.
-further study, and, and we'll keep you in the loop. Okay? So, not to, I don't want to be, I don't want to shut you down, per se, but at the same want to be, I don't want to shut you down, per se, but at the same time, I want to stick to the format of the meeting, if you don't mind.
And likewise, like, you know, we can feel their pain.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had kids that same age-
Right.
And when I, I was, I was right at the bus stop at that age, it's just, it's scary. I get it, it's real. Um, so, anyway, where were we?
Do we need to make a motion to table that, or we just do it?
I think that's just a, a tabled.
Right, right. We're not taking action on a-
There's no action, there's no vote. Which brings us to our regular agenda. Which is our disbursements of twenty-five thousand dollars or greater. Uh, I will read those into the record at this time. Uh, the first item is to the city of New Hope for Thirty-Sixth Avenue North, what?
Just paying New Hope all sorts of money tonight.
Just because she's here, you're gonna give her a hard time? Come on.
Right.
Ninety-one thousand dollar check, you're funding thirteen hundred dollars.
So this is, this is where we had the opportunity to have New Hope manage a project on Thirty-Six, and, uh, all we had to do is cover some of the cost for ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Thank you to our neighbors for that.
That's right. And then Commercial Asphalt Company for, uh, s, what is that, seven hundred and sixty tons of asphalt? For mill and overlay of streets, that's thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for May water cost of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Health Partners, July health insurance premiums for ninety-six thousand, eighty-seven dollars. IRS for federal and FICA withholding taxes from payday fi, six fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, for fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Same Pay E for payday six twenty-nine, eighteen, for sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. Logis for May support and services is twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Paulden Sons Inc. for Phase Sixteen Skyway Street Reconstruction for May two thousand and eighteen, ninety-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Pembroke Companies, Inc. for Bass Lake Road Streetscape for May two thousand and eighteen, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Para for employee and city contributions, uh, for payday six fifteen would be fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, and for payday six twenty-nine, eighteen is fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Triple E Water and Sewer LLC ins, for installing the sewer and water at fifty-six twelve and fifty-six eighteen Adair Avenue for thirty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. US Bank for debt service payments, two hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Total disbursements twenty-five thousand dollars or greater are one million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Are there any questions on any of these items from the council? John?
I need to recuse myself from this, uh, from this vote, based on one of the items on the list. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on any item? Seeing none? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Julie. For a second. Olga?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So barring the first two, uh, public hearings, that was our business for the day, is paying the bills, essentially is what that comes down to. Um, that is the end of our regular agenda. Uh, I will go into some of the announcements of what's going on in town. Uh, the Crystal Business Association will be meeting Wednesday, July eighteenth, at eight-thirty a.m. at, uh, here at City Hall. Crystal Frolics is coming up real quick here, it's July twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth. Uh, more information is available on the Frolics website, that's crystalfrolics.org, and then the city council will be holding a budget session on, I have the old dates, the sixteenth and, what's the-
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. And the twenty-third, August sixteenth and twenty-third, at six-thirty p.m. here in the community room. Uh, Night to Unite is coming up quick, too. It's August seventh. Police Open House will be running from five-thirty to seven-thirty p.m. Um, neighborhood block parties registrations are available at City Hall, that's online at our website, crystalmn.gov. And then the primary election will be August fourteenth. Polls are open at seven a.m., and they close at eight p.m. To find out where to vote, check the Secretary of State's website at pollfinder.sos.state.mn.us. Next Crystal council meeting will be Tuesday, August twenty-first, at seven p.m. here at the City Hall Council Chambers, and a reminder to Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops that they are invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at City Hall during a council meeting. Uh, feel free to contact staff or any council member, and we'll make the arrangements for that. That can be a flag ceremony along with, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance. Reminder to everybody that City Hall, or, excuse me, the city council meetings are all online. You can watch the city council meetings and listen to the work sessions online at crystalmn.gov. Uh, of course, you are always welcome to be here in person, and we appreciate that. Any other announcements from any other council members?
May I just add to the, the, uh, Crystal Frolics, and just reminder that if you want to participate in the search for the crystal ball, or if you want to sing karaoke, or what else do we need this button for? Oh, to win great prizes in a drawing. Uh, you can get the buttons here at City Hall, Almstead's Associated Bank, and I believe at the community center, too, right, John? So, please, don't forget to get your button, it's coming up soon, a week from Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A reminder, is that something that they still use for the carnival as well?
Uh, no, no, don't need the button for the carnival.
Okay. All right, you need a button, because it's got this really cool design with this really cool flag on it. Yes.
Very cool.
All right, anybody else? With that, we are going to adjourn for the evening. Thank you for coming in and listening. Motion. John?
I'll move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I second that.
Would you second that? We got two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Sorry about the procedural issue.
So excited.
Have a great night, and thank you for stopping in.